Called order, the Ashland Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 10th, 2022. Start with an invocation by Commissioner Goode and then pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for our wonderful city, Ashland, Kentucky. And we come today asking you once again for your divine wisdom and direction on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions on behalf of our city and its citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and most of all, our neighborhoods and the citizens of this community. Bless those in attendance today. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wertz. Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting, called meeting, held on January 27th, 2022, the called meeting held on January 28th, 2022, and the called regular meeting held on February 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearings and reports. Commissioners, if you will allow me to start, just want to express my sincerest gratitude to our Visit AKY team, our city staff, and many others, including members of our commission, for their efforts to be the best hosts for the Mini SOR Conference. I was under the weather, unfortunately, at the exact time that this event was to occur, and Commissioner Blanton stepped up for me, and I really appreciate that. But it's heartening to see 650-plus people from all over come to our city to see what we already knew about our city, which is it's a special place. Many times, I think, we become jaded because we live here and we don't always see the beauty and what we have. And I, for one, think a lot of people came out of that meeting thinking we do have something very special. In fact, I've received emails, text messages from attendees that were very appreciative of not only the hospitality but the condition of our city. They loved how it looked, and they were excited to come back for another event. So with that, I thank you all. All right, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that, and I apologize, I'll probably get a little emotional because I came down the street today and I see the fence up around the G.B. Johnson Building, and I was like, oh, look, there it is. And like, I was literally, it's finally happening that we're going to get that building down. We're going to see this massive blighted property in the middle of our downtown being revitalized and going to be another wonderful addition to what we have going on here. And just to echo your sentiments about the SOR Conference, being part of the planning of that event, I have to say I am so absolutely proud of this exercise in teamwork and how it played out between Visit Ashland and its staff, Ashland in Motion, the city staff, coordination with SOR. It all worked beautifully. And speaking with the SOR Board and the SOR staff, they were pleased with how we handled ourselves in that situation as well. You know, when we started this process, SOR was going to be very, very happy with us if we got to 250 or 300 registered. And we hit 700 from 47 counties in Kentucky and six states around us. So it says a little bit of something, says a little something about what people wanted to see. Like, they wanted to come and they wanted to see what was going on here. And the topic of the SOR Summit being tourism and downtown revitalization, how awesome is it that we got to showcase what we've been working on? And I just, like I said, I will talk for 100 years because I'm just sort of welling up with emotion about all of it, just because everything that we've worked for, for the last two decades, Commissioner, we're there, we're getting there. And that makes me happy. One more note, the Gravy Bowl is coming up on April the 2nd. We are still looking for Gravy Bowl participants. If you want this event to happen, we need people who are willing to make gravy. So look that up.
This is eastern Kentucky.
I know, I know.
Everybody can make gravy, surely.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All righty. So first of all, congratulations to the Tomcats for winning the regional championship, onto the Sweet 16. So we're very proud of them. And I talked to Coach Mays the other day, and we just couldn't be more proud of how they conduct themselves, regardless of how far they go. Just the attitude of that team and their discipline is very inspiring. So just a few words about SOR. City staff, unbelievable, from streets. You know, they were out the weeks before, getting us ready for it. Brandy Clark, obviously, I think by now, everybody knows just what a superstar she's been for our city. Michelle Grubb, by the way, so standing in that day, you know, I almost felt, I was probably the closest I'll get to feeling like any kind of celebrity because she just was ready to go. I mean, I just stepped in, she had exactly what I needed, kept me on point for the most part. I strayed a little bit, but she, I can't say, just can't say enough about what she did for us, just for weeks leading up to that, to that event. Catherine Nutzinger also. You had city staff volunteering through the weekend to get ready for it, get everything ready. And then tourism, and, you know, it's a team now. And that's, that's what we love to see. And just, just a couple of words, you know, it's, I thought about this as I was leaving the Paramount the other day. You know, the team that we have in the city now, it, I've been trying to put words to it. I'm fortunate to come along after you all have done so much through the years, but we're owning it. We're owning our city, and we're owning what we're doing now. And if people want to talk about Ashland in any sort of way, we're going to be there to discuss positive, you know, constructive criticism, input, we're there to take it. And we're owning our city, we're standing, we've always had a great staff, and we're standing up, and we're taking it personal. And, you know, sometimes I always have to pull myself back a little bit, especially since being in this position, but, you know, I don't think I really should be doing that because I do take it personal. And because we care about this place, and we care about the city, and this is what we put our lives into. And, you know, when I leave here, I'm going to go back to work at a manufacturing plant. And, you know, my dad talks to me about this a lot, and he's always asking what's going on with, you know, companies and things like that. And nobody understands the importance of that more than I do, I can guarantee you. But I also understand that we're tired of being a victim to economic conditions, and we're ready to build from within and provide for ourselves. And that's what you're seeing. And that's what you're seeing from our staff getting ready for this, for this event. And, you know, almost 700 people saw that on full display this week. And, you know, it's, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of this group, no matter what, no matter what position I'm in. I can't, can't be more proud to be, to be in this city. So, thank you.
Well, I'm going to say it's really good to see everybody out there, real-life human beings, although I didn't recognize any of you because you don't have your face masks on. So there you have it. But welcome today. It's really good to see you. I'll just say a couple of words about SOR. I thought our transportation center, too, was absolutely gorgeous. There were so many comments about that, what a jewel we have there. And I can remember when we got that, transportation center was pretty much a mess down there and how beautiful it is now. I ran into a lot of people who were quite impressed with our city. I was so proud of this event. And I know all the work that went into it. And I will say that this is the perfect example of people working together for a common goal, and that is to help our city in every way possible have a successful, and as Amanda said, or Commissioner Clark said, it's not a mini-conference anymore. We're not many. Ashland doesn't want to be many, but we're thrilled to have that, and I think we showed them what we could do. And so kudos to everybody concerned with that. I do want to comment on Gravy Bowl, too. I know there are gravy cookers out there, closet gravy cookers, come out and cook. I've tasted some of that gravy. I'm telling you, there's gravy cookers here. Come on out, we need you. And we're at the Union this year, so that's another wonderful place we have. So come on out and give us your gravy. We need to have the gravy, okay? The other thing I wanted to say is Pope Chapter DAR scheduled a Vietnam Veterans Luncheon Appreciation Luncheon tomorrow, and because of the threat of inclement weather, we have moved out to June or April 9th. So if you know any Vietnam veterans, we're busy calling them. We had 130 people coming, but we can't take a risk on somebody getting hurt. So that's all I have. On to you, Commissioner Goode.
Okay. I just want to welcome everybody today and just kind of echo the sentiments. Just a few other announcements. The Union had their first event, which was a little wedding fair there. Had 20 vendors there. I know, Josh, you were there. And I just want to commend them, and they're going to open their restaurant down the street south very soon. And they're working on there right now. So I commend the Bears for their investment here in the city. Repair Fair. DJ just informed me that he's going to start taking applications here for Repair Fair, and we're going to get that revived here. And that's a very needed, you know, event that we have, that people come together from all different walks, service clubs and everything. We come together to help some of our neediest people. Is that, is that right, Chris?
Right. We are taking applications for Repair Fair. We still have some work to do as far as budgeting. Build Ashland has graciously donated $5,000 to Repair Fair to get it signed. At some point, we'll probably come back in front of the Commission's board.
Fantastic. Kudos to Build Ashland for their contribution. Then, let's see, what else I have there? The District, I picked this up, I was just at Tim Horton's, they're one of my favorite places, and I picked up a beacon here. And the District's Spring Open House is going to be this Saturday, the 12th. Now, you probably have to wear your snow boots to their spring thing here, according to Tony Cavalier, but the District is going to have Open House on March the 12th, and different businesses will be showcased during that time. More of our blighted properties are coming down, and I'm thankful for community and economic development and our investment in getting those down. Over 20 now, I think, have been demolished. But it was a week of victories, to say the least, in our city. And every one of us have a passion and a love for different things, and so I equate team in a lot of my thoughts. This past week, our basketball team won the region championship for the fourth year in a row, and that says something about these young men and their coaching. Thank you for My Town TV. I mean, my relatives could watch that game in California. I mean, they're all over the place, and so I'm thankful for My Town TV that broadcasts. And y'all do a wonderful job broadcasting it. You and Mike Miller and Tyler and all of them, you know, it's such a great feature to have in our city. But the accomplishment didn't come overnight. These kids have practiced and practiced. They play year-round, and some of them are dinged up and injured for all year long. And we have a wonderful full-time staff of trainers. G.G. is, Gwen is one of the greatest there is down there, and she makes sure that these kids are ready to play. But they're united in their focus. I will also say, my football team, football doesn't stop in December. It goes year-round. They start in January after that. And they're in the weight room doing agilities right now and everything, and I love, and they also are required to do public service things. And they went out and did Build a Bed. Those 80 players show up for Build a Bed. But I segue that by saying it was a team effort for SOR this week. It was a great time in our city. And I met people from all over the, all over the state. I have relatives in Pikeville and Hazard, and so I keep a pretty close, you know, dialogue with them. And it was, it's so refreshing to see the accomplishments done in these, in these little towns and all over our city. But it was, I'd like to commend Brandy Clark and our city staff for all that they do. And I had comments from people I didn't even know, saying, man, your Streets Department are really on it. And I'd like to commend some, I was eating lunch there at the hotel, and they said, the police, man, are so friendly. And so I just love to hear comments like that from outsiders. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you all. This time, we'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't think I can add any depth beyond what you all have hit on the SOR, and I think you've heard me say it before. I just appreciate what the staff, the things the staff does that we know about, but especially stuff that we don't know about, because there's so much that goes on that we never know about, and I appreciate them being proactive. I'd like, Darren Gifford, would you please stand up? Darren Gifford is one of the city's newest employees. He is the Engineering Superintendent, has a civil engineering degree. He comes to us via KYTC, and really, really excited to have Darren on board, looking to a bright future here in the city, even though he has to work for Mr. Cole. I think he's going to be able to overcome that. But Darren, welcome. We're more glad that you're here than you could possibly know. Thanks for picking us.
Welcome. Next, I want to talk to the COVID, and hopefully this will be something I don't talk about in the future, but it's still kind of, as we hopefully wrap this down. I do want to give kudos to Mike, HR, Finance, and all the directors that continue to work this on a day-to-day basis. I just want to throw some statistics at you because while we're definitely on the decline, or on the decline, we're just not quite there yet. We had 115 positive cases of the 221 total exposure since August. So if you think about that, that's just short of half of the city staff just since last August. There were, in the first phase, 13 cases, in the second wave, 26, and now, as I said, 115. So in all of those phases, a total of 154 cases to date of our staff, of a staff of about 300. And I'm very pleased to say that I don't think that we've dropped any balls. I mean, the staff has continued to perform. We continue to provide services to the city despite that challenge. So kudos to the leadership in the back of the room. And then just one other thing, the Boyd County incidence case rate per 100,000 people, you might remember that we were defined as in the red when we had above 25%. Well, Boyd County is now in line with the Kentucky standard and the CDC standard that says it's anything above 20%. So we're still technically in the red, but there's approximately 45% of the counties in Kentucky that aren't in the red. So that's the decline we're all enjoying and glad we could be here today without the mask. Next thing, I want to hit Mayor, and I want to give kudos to Lorraine, DJ, CED, Andrew Wheeler, anybody else who's had a hand in this on the demolitions. It's actually even a little bit better than Commissioner Goode had mentioned. To date, there's 30 structures that have been totally cleared. 16 structures are under contract. Five structures are out for bid that are due on the 17th of March. Four more structures are out for bid by the 14th, and 12 are in title search. So in a best-case scenario, if all those comes through, that'll be 67 blighted properties that have been demolished, which is pretty staggering.
Yeah.
And to the Board, thanks for committing those resources to that effort. And as Commissioner Clark has already mentioned, the Ashland Oil Building does start today. They put up the blocks. You're not going to see anything physically on it for a couple of weeks. They're going to do about six weeks of asbestos removal, and then you'll start seeing where the rubber meets the road, where they actually start taking down the building. They have until November to take that building down. I feel very, very good about the effort that Mr. Cole led and the rest of the city staff that was there in the initial discussion with O'Rourke, the O'Rourke Company, and feeling very positive about where we're going with that. A couple of other things, Mayor, the pay and compensation study, Mayor and Commissioners, the pay and compensation study, we expect to pick a contractor today for that. We've eliminated, or we've reduced it down to three from the seven original bids. Also, in cases the community doesn't know this, the Kaiba Policy Committee, two weeks ago, gave a final approval to the city getting about 500, just short of $500,000 in grant to do the streetscape from 13th Street to 18th Street. So basically, that'll enable us to get the engineering going on that final, what that final project will look like. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Cole, we have those bids in that we will do the analysis for the engineering of that project in the very near future. So that's another good news story and a good example of the staff pushing for, like I said all the time, OPM, other people's money. So thank you very much to the staff, and that's all I have. Oh, also, one other note, Mayor, the VC3 presentation will not happen today. It was not ready for primetime in my vernacular, so we'll defer that to when it is ready.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry complaint form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Anybody like to come forward at this time?
Afternoon.
How you doing?
Good. My name's Dave Williams. I think I was here, me and Mark Renfro, was here on October 28th, and talked about vocational school that our Ashland Independent Schools was looking at. Just want to give you guys an update on that, and I'll try and be brief here. But we were just notified, you know, there's three budgets that have to be reconciled. The Governor has a budget, the House has a budget, and the Senate has a budget. And the Governor's budget gave us a loophole of an opportunity that we could reapply and maybe get the $10 million grant that we're so hopeful for. The House budget was not so kind. They went back, and we were assured. Mark and I and Ashley Lehman actually took a day to went to Frankfurt, and we spoke to all our House Representatives, as well as House Representative Brandon Reed, his vice chair of the Budget Subcommittee. And he was pretty adamant that, you know, we're late to the dance. We're going to work through this line as it comes available, as budget comes available. So Ashland, even though we may have a superior need, the fact that we've been so complacent in recognizing this as an issue for our school and for our community, that, you know, we're going to have to get through these 22 that were denied September 1st of 2021. So, you know, we understand that, but, you know, there's still some, hopefully some negotiation. There's still prayers being sent up from our team, and I know that there's commitments from you guys as well, that, you know, we want to do this. And so, but that kind of goes back to what I was talking with, with Sean Howard and the School Board. Mark and I was over there, and we were saying, you know, if this doesn't happen, what's our plan? What are we going to do? You know, we know that our city is declining in population, about a point and a half, one and a half percent a year is typically what I was told that we're seeing. And from that, you know, it's very, very little opportunities that are coming in this way. It's mainly people, like I said, are leaving. So, you know, I feel that, you know, I've done, I'm trying my best to look at what I feel would be a great move for the city. And, you know, I've watched a lot of videos and things from the Kentucky Department of Education, but there was a, they had a gentleman who presented at a conference for them out of California, and he basically flourished, or his thoughts was, it was the 1-2-7 principle for a thriving community. And that dealt with jobs. For every seven jobs, it requires some sort of community college, some sort of technical trade, some sort of college of training like that, those seven jobs help support two bachelor degrees and one master's and above. And that's the thriving community that once was in place up until probably the 80s, when everybody started focusing on, everybody had to go to college. The interesting thing about colleges for, for all the students that end up wanting to go to college, only about a fourth of them actually finish. They always end up, there's a huge amount of dropouts, and they are incurring that debt. And so, you know, And so, you know, we need to have opportunities for our young people. And so the vocational trade is what we had visioned is real thing. And, you know, kind of to showing where we had, I know that Matt, Mr. Mayor Perkins, had mentioned that there was a separation between, you know, where the city managed the school system and this independent school system. And we didn't get involved in, and I understand that. But I think we've all kind of taken the ball, or eye off the ball, as far as the future of the city. Interesting to know that every graduate from Ashland Independent Schools is contacted somewhere around about a year after graduation, could be thereabouts, and they're asked a survey. And it really is a survey to say, how well are you doing? In other words, did we prepare you well enough for life? Every high school, state law has to do this, submit it to the Department of Education, and it's posted. And it's sad when Ashland Independent Schools are a hundred and seventy-eight out of two hundred and twenty-seven high schools for students being prepared for post-secondary education, post-life. What's even worse is our male students rank a hundred and ninety-eighth out of two hundred and twenty-seven high schools. There's only twenty-nine high schools that's worse than Ashland. And we see that as opportunities or lack thereof, trying to build and trying to work on those, on that seven. That seven, seventy to eighty percent of the kids, students who need this. So, I mean, I say this, that, you know, I meant, I know Matt said it, Mayor Perkins said he was going to reach out to the school and see what they could do, touch base with Sean Howard. I don't know if you've had any of those conversations. But I am a hundred percent in what Josh just said, build from within. You know, we can do all these projects that we talked about here. But if we have no future with our, with our students, with our, with our upcoming population, we're not going to fare well. And so I get the whole thing where, you know, we don't get involved in the, in the school system. But at what point can we all get together and realize what's best for the students? What's best for the young population? Let's all get into a meeting and, and say, let's look at opportunities and options. And I think when we start looking at major projects, we really need to put our students, our youth, at our, as our number one priority.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I'd like to address this a little bit. I was at, I'm at the high school all the time. And in talking to the vocational teachers and administration and stuff like it, right now Blazer has thirteen vocational tracks of education there. They have five business tracks, they have one culinary track, one food prep track, one phlebotomy track, one pharmacy tech track. And the FFA has some business tracks also. I know Boyd County got their ten million dollars for a vocational school. They're ten minutes away from us. And the only thing they added, what they're going to add is aviation, HVAC, electric, and plumbing. That's, that makes a whole vocational school. But, you know, I just don't see that we're, you know, I see it's important, and I'd like to see it happen. But I think we're, I don't think we're losing kids. I really don't, being with them every day. If you, if you look, open the paper, you'll see every day who's spending the money here. There's, Kingsdawes Medical Center is buying stuff left hand over foot. There's going to be a sixty million dollar project over there pretty soon. And we've evolved from heavy manufacturing to, to medical service type of retail kind of a community. One recent study said there's twenty thousand people that Ashland has, but there's ninety thousand people in the city every day. And so, you know, I don't see the doom and gloom. I see optimism, and I see optimism from this, this SOAR conference that we had, that we put our, our minds together in collaboration. But we pay school tax, you know? And I talked to the superintendent and the principal and stuff like that, and I'd like to see it happen. But it does, if it doesn't, I'm not going to wring my hands because I know they're hard at work. They've got thirteen different vocational tracks right now going on at Blazer High School. Not everybody goes to college. I've got seven kids between us. Some of them are college and some of them are not. Hallelujah if you want to work at a restaurant, or you want to, you know, groom dogs, or whatever you want to do. Start a business, you know, whatever. Not everybody's college bound. But, you know, they're self-starters also, and they can't look back and say, I wasn't prepared. They got to get prepared. And ten minutes away, you're going to have a ten million dollar complex. You've got one in Russell right now. And so I, I mean, I just don't see the negativity in this. I see positivity. And I see if it happens, it happens, I hope it does. But if it doesn't, you know, we're going to, we're going to go, we're going to build from within. We're going to plant from what we have. And Kingsdawes is a big, is a big part of this right now over here. The retail places, you can't, we had three hundred and seven business licenses between January and January. And people say, people just don't want to do business in Ashland. Well, that's just not true.
I want to say something too. Of course, we've been impacted over the years when we have manufacturing leave our area. But in this last census, we had a slight gain. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kristin, we have a slight gain in population in Ashland?
Seventy-three.
Yeah. So, I mean, I too, I have to agree that I feel really positive about what, what we have going here. And it is, all goes together. Economic development, education, our downtown area, it's all not just one thing. It's all together. So, yeah, I feel good about this.
I have another comment on that as well. The, the comment made that we need to ask our young people and use our young people as direction for where we're headed. When we put together the survey for the Destination Ashland team, our young people were included heavily. We were in every school. We had one-on-one meetings. We had student ambassadors that took our surveys all over. That's, that study was driven by our young people. And everything that you're seeing happening as part of that plan and the plan that was put together was, was driven by the people who have a future here and have, have an investment in what's going to happen next. And I'm proud of that. I'm with you, Commissioner. I don't see the gloom and doom. I think we're on a path that we've, that we haven't been on in a long, long time. I don't disagree that we need this vocational school, so please don't take my comment as I'm saying I don't, I don't agree with what you're saying. I do agree with, with the sentiment that we work with the schools to figure out what our trajectory is as a community. I'm not sure it's a function of city government to fund a vocational school, since our residents do pay so much in a school tax anyway. There are, we're already investing in that. But, but I, I struggle with the gloom and doom aspect as our kids are, I don't see. There are opportunities elsewhere for other jobs and such. But I think for the first time in a very long time, we're creating opportunity here in a way that we've never done before. And I think we, we got to stay on that mission and we got to stay on that path. We're certainly not going to keep our young people here if we continue to tell them that this is not a place they want to live.
Yep.
You know, I don't know, I don't, I think I mentioned this last time you guys were here, and I invited to, I would love to, to hear, hear more about it. I haven't heard from anyone yet. But I mean, I manage a manufacturing plant, right? That's what I do for a living. So we just hired our twelfth person from the AIT program in ACTC. Now, I know college isn't, isn't for everyone, we know that. But as a company, now I'm speaking private world right now, but as, as a company and in that position, I have to decide where I put my resources. Because guess what? Other than caring about our young people in the city, which we obviously do, as a steward of my company, I've got to care about nurturing that workforce as well. We've got to invest in that, right?
Yeah.
And so investing in that program, which has been nothing but great for us, and, and seeing the graduates that we've got out of that program have just been amazing. So it's, for me, it's a matter of also, you know, as one of the, you know, corporate citizens in the area, I look at where I can use my resources. And I know my friends at the Riverport who manage the other facilities as well feel the same way. So again, kind of the same as Commissioner Clark. Obviously, we have a vested interest and we care about nurturing our kids and getting them ready for the workforce. I do as much as anyone, aside from the city, but, you know, in my career. So, so understand, understand the, the passion, love the passion, love, love the care for, for, for the, for our students. But just seeing, I'm just kind of articulating what I, what I see and where we're putting our resources.
And to, and I'm going to make a comment as well. You know, we also, as an elected body, don't want to be misinterpreted as trying to overstep our boundaries for another elected body, which is the Board of Education. And so we have to be very careful. And I think that's why conversations between our entity and theirs is, is critical to craft policy and procedures in a way forward. To your comments about advocacy, I will probably surprise you, but I did have a meeting with our Senate leadership about this very issue. In fact, I was late to another meeting by about fifteen minutes because I was working on advocacy for this very project that you are describing. Nobody on this board believes that we shouldn't invest in education. I don't think anybody here would ever say that. We champion our kids, even the ones that are struggling, especially the ones that are struggling. So, you know, we, we as a board appreciate your comments and take it to heart. And we'll work with anybody that wants to make education a priority for our city, and I thank you.
I did have one last comment, a couple of comments. You know, the one thing on a serious subject like this is we can't have misinformation out there. So I just want to clarify. If our students, if Boyd County were to get the ten million dollars, nothing's etched in stone. As I said, it's all going to be up in the air, who gets it and whatever. But we did get a confirmation from Boyd County that the Ashland students would have to unenroll at Ashland to go out there and re-enroll to take advantage of that vocational school. Russell is what we call an ATC, which is an area technical center. Area technical centers are different than a local operated vocational school. They cater to all the schools that do not have a vocational school. So in order to be eligible for a ten million dollar grant, and we were, just like Mark, Commissioner Goode said, we do have thirteen clusters. I'm not saying we don't. That's the reason we were able to get the designation to be able to apply. But the question that we had is, they, they have, they have a welding program, they have an electrician program out there. But they're allowing Russell students and Fairview students and Raceland students, who are freshmen, sophomores, to be able to take upper level classes. And Ashland does not have any authorization to go there. Now Frankfurt, we've kind of contested that, but we don't know if that's going to go. We have also been working diligently to try to make up some time to get some spaces for at the, at ACTC and Industrial Park. Whether that'll happen.
Have you been able to address the Board of Education, same concerns?
Oh, yeah. We've, we've spoke multiple times. And they are on board, but, but here's where it's getting down to, guys, is that ten million dollars doesn't buy what ten million dollars used to even a year ago. The prices that's going up for square foot, I mean, Johnson Central budgeted a new high school and new vocational school used two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Now they've been told, you better raise that to three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And Fayette County is, is, has rumblings that they're going to move up to four hundred dollars a square foot. So we can only do so much. If we don't, if, if we don't get any assistance, we're only going to be able to make, do so much. And that's where I think it's the priority of the city. Now, we can contest that, just like you said, well, you know, we pay so many, but at the end of the day, you know, it's our youth that is going to pull this city and continue this city. And that's our, but I just wanted to make a comment.
We have a budget meeting coming up, and you'll be invited, I guarantee it. And you see where we put our money.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business.
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a professional services contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Palmer Engineering for professional engineering services for the design of the Fifteenth Street and Sixteenth Street roadway, street scape improvement project in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Amending Ordinance Number One Seventy, Series of Twenty Twenty-One, The Comprehensive Hiring Ordinance for Police Officers for the Department of Police Regarding Pay and Compensation for Newly Employed Police Trainees and Police Officers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Bluegrass Community Federal Credit Union Regarding Encroachment for a Freestanding Sign and ATM Machine at Twenty-three Twenty-One Carter Avenue on the city's right-of-way.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing improving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and County Line Companies LLC DBA PlayPros for a contract regarding the all-inclusive playground equipment in Central Park for the Department of Parks and Recreation, extending the contract completion date to May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm so, I'm so happy this is getting.
Jumping the gun.
I'm so happy. You know, the fence was down because of the weather, that temporary fence, and people thought it was open. And man, it was just so, so, I was so happy to see the disabled kids over there that were utilizing those, those new, you know, features over there. It was so good.
It was, it's definitely, we're moving in the right direction.
And we need forty, forty-degree weather for a week so we can pour that flooring down.
I think next week is a good time to possibly do it.
Amen, amen.
If I can make a comment, Mayor, just that, that snow fence was taken down. And while we enjoy seeing the kids on there, it does expose them to injuries without that foundation being there. Last Saturday was a great testament. The park was jammed. I couldn't believe how many were in the completed playground already. But kudos to our citizens, they did not go back and do that again. I saw a lot of folks just tugging on the wire to see how strong it was, but they resisted that urge. And again, it's tough to see all those kids out there and not having them there. But again, it's, it's an uneven surface and kids can get hurt on there. So I appreciate the citizens who exercise that discipline.
Hundreds of people in the park last week.
Beautiful day.
All right. Consent agenda. We have the reading and adoption of a resolution adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action recommended by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Ashland for March tenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And new business, item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Creating the Position of Customer Service Representative Supervisor and Adopting the Job Description for Said Positions in the Department of Finance and Adopting the Amended Authorized Positions List of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number Fifty-One, Series of Twenty Thousand, Twenty Seventeen, as previously amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Adopting the Job Description for the Position of Director of Public Services in the Department of Public Services, Adopting the Replacement Job Description for the Position of Human Resources Director, Replacing Human Resources Parks and Recreation Director in the Department of General Government, Adopting the Revised Job Descriptions for the Positions of Superintendent, Crew Leader, and Administrative Clerk and Maintenance Workers One, Two, and Three by Reassigning Said Positions to the Department of Public Services, Creating the Division of Parks and Recreation and Adopting the Amended Authorized Position List of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number Fifty-One, Series of Two Thousand Seventeen, as previously amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead. Do you want, the city manager, can you give a summary real quick of?
Yeah. Reason we put this on the board is to try to tackle a couple of issues, and I'll try to be brief on this. Number one, in my professional recommendation, what this accomplishes is it consolidates public service.
public services and puts like functions together. We don't have that right now with the split that we've got with the, uh, HR director also being dual-headed as a, the parks director. So think in your mind of streets, sanitation, garage, animal control, flood wall, uh, these are all public services. Parks and Recreation would be part of that. Uh, it enables unity of effort, puts like, like I said before, it also puts like functions together. So there are 25 maintenance workers, 1, 2, and 3, and the streets department, there's 10, and parks and recs. They do similar functions, their paths cross over quite a bit, whether it's maintaining Broadway Square, maintaining the riverfront, uh, what they do on the winter wonderland of lights. So again, unity of effort there between those, um, between those organizations. Uh, it potentially doesn't grow a position. It really depends on who may get hired into this position. I think we've got plenty of qualified candidates internal to the city, and I'd recommend that we advertise this internally. Uh, and as I mentioned before a minute ago, the HR director gets to focus on being an HR director and not being dual-headed. Uh, that's in a nutshell. What the desired end state, what I'd like to see is that it's more effective use of manpower from those areas I just spoke about, uh, and less distractions for the HR director and his team. That's in, in a broad nutshell.
Okay. Would we have any discussion from the commission?
I have a few things. Um, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to organize my thoughts beyond, you know, it is a function of this commission for the organizational structure of the city. And I think we all have, just in different discussions individually, have different ideas about how to separate parks and human resources and where each of those goes. And, and we haven't really publicly had the opportunity to discuss that as a body. And I don't know when, when, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss it as a body. I don't know if, if budget discussions are, are the appropriate time to discuss it as a body to sort of lay out the organizational structure. I'm, I'm not sure where that is, and I don't know how to proceed. I'm not comfortable with this, the way it is. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to the discussion about how to get me comfortable with this.
I think we all are having some different ideas about the way this is structured now and the way we would like to see it work. And because we can't meet outside by state KRS law, we can't meet together three, more than two of us at a time. We have not had the opportunity to really discuss and put together what we think could be a great plan for this. You know, we have difference of opinion on, um, the type of work that would be given to, uh, well, with city, with the streets and the parks. I for one think parks ought to be its own entity, but we need, I think we, this is a good opportunity to look at different ways we can do this. And maybe budget time would be the good time. I, I don't know, but, um, so I'm bringing, just bringing forth my thoughts on it.
My, my thoughts are, I went brown and round with this, and I, I got a little history. Debbie Musser was here for 28 years as a HR director. And when she stepped down, um, you know, uh, we, we were faced with that opening right there. And we, you know, interviewed a bunch of candidates and stuff like that, and nobody really had a, it wasn't a good fit for, we couldn't find really a good fit. So out of convenience, I thought, we, we combined HR with parks at that time. And, and they've done a stellar job, let me tell you. They've, they've done a great job. But we've grown and we've evolved, and everything has a shelf life. And, and now, you know, we've, we've approved $865,000 in parks improvements. There are Central Park, Oliverio Park, AK Park, Wendell Banks Park, Dawson Park, Pollard Mills, River, the Riverfront, 47th Street, Spring Park, East Central Park. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a big responsibility and we're growing. Uh, there, we still have, the only thing that we sponsor right now is trick or treat.
Yeah.
We've let go a bunch of things that we sponsored before just out of, you know, we just don't have the manpower and, and don't have the, you know, the, the wherewithal. And we're, we're, uh, we, we got rid of Memorial Day, Labor Day, Easter, New Year's, the Donkey Derby, which was my favorite. Uh, I rode a donkey named Big Stupid one year. And all my, all my school chums were there rooting me on, and I broke three ribs that day riding Big Stupid. Mate, it was in ER. We don't have any.
I want to say something here, Marty. I agree with Commissioner Goos, the city, I believe the city should be doing more city-sponsored events in the park for our citizens. Um, I would like to see something on 4th of July. Uh, you know, we're going to be 250 years old in, I think, four years or something like that. But I think we ought to be doing something on every major holiday or for our citizens in the park. Uh, city-sponsored things, uh, and not, you know, and even it doesn't have to be in Central Park all the time. We could move them or move it around, you know?
Right.
But yeah, I agree in reinstating a lot of those.
And we had, we, we got, did away with Kids' Day, we did away with Professor Ross Tennis Tournament. And, you know, we've done away with a lot of stuff, and we're, we're grow, I want to grow our parks. And in, in that instance, I don't want to see any other, any other, uh, uh, departments combined anymore. It just takes away. I want our focus to be if you have a park director, a superintendent, and his employees. And, uh, I, I, I look at this Public Works or Public Services, we got sanitation. I wouldn't do a thing with sanitation. They're, they're, they're all-stars as far as I'm, I think there was 18 families involved the last thing. Uh, animal control, streets, I mean, they do a great job, but with parks, you got park maintenance, Dawson Pool, and the cemetery. And I just think when you combine different things, that the, your focus is not on those solely. So that's my objection to the way that this is right now. Uh, right now, I did a little research, there's 15 cities in Kentucky that have parks directors. And they, and, and I would like to see us, and Huntington also, and Morehead. Uh, down the road, I'd like to see us have a splash pad park. I'd like to see us open up our, our fields to travel teams. I mean, people may, you know, travel ball is a big thing. And we're, we're investing in all our ball fields with new scoreboards and new fields and so forth. Uh, and I'd like to en, enhance it. I just don't see this being the best fix, uh, the way it's written right now to, to do that. I think it's spreading us thin. So that's my comments.
So I, I have a, do you have a comment on?
Yeah, hang on, Commissioner.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
Well, just real quick, I, I appreciate, you know, you all make great points. And, um, for me, you know, this is, first, I mean, now I'm pulling back on my manufacturing a little bit. It's, for me, I always look at decisions as we manage processes, not people. And to anybody that doesn't know what that means, it might sound a little, a little weird, but you, you go, as long as you have good processes in place for how you make decisions, then you don't manage feelings and things like that. You don't manage the people, you manage, the processes will take care of that for you. So that's kind of how I look at everything, and it's, it's important in this discussion to outline. I think that it's very appropriate for us to discuss the structure, the organizational structure of the city, absolutely. But our personnel reports to our city manager, and that's, I think it's important for our, for us to draw that line, or for me personally. But, and also, so, I mean, this is one, this is one, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm conservative on this, honestly, just to be, put it completely out there. I believe that we do a phenomenal job of providing parks, facilities, um, for our citizens. And I said this during the SOR event. I think that we have to supply a canvas for our citizens to utilize. And, um, I think that we do a phenomenal job of that, and we're doing, and we're doing better and better at that. Now, financially, Commissioner Goos is absolutely right, and we talked about this when we passed , um, the, the bond for all the projects. It, that was a bond, right? There's, that's not a revenue stream. That's a, I mean, it's revenue, but it's a, it's a bond. So, um, you know, now I have the utmost confidence in this group that in a few years, we're going to be seeing the growth. In that next census, you're going to see population growth. I have the utmost confidence. I know that we're going to get there. Financially, right now, um, I think we, we need a little bit of time, but, I mean, I can't argue what you, what we know, we've seen in the past from the parks. I just, I have to step back from this and look at it honestly from a fiscally conservative viewpoint. And, and that's, that's where I am right now. This is a discussion for us. I think it's a, it's a dynamic discussion that we're going to keep having. But that, that's where I am right now.
And I think we all look at fiscal responsibility in what we do. There are different ways to structure this and looking, and maybe the best time to talk about it is during budget time where we can look at, actually look at them resolved together. And I agree, our parks people are doing great right now. They're doing a great job. Streets does a great job. This is not about that. It's not about that. It's about doing the, the, the justice to our parks it deserves. I think it needs to be its own department if we can figure out a way to do that.
Up to eight years ago, we had a park director.
Yes, we did.
And, uh, and we didn't have all these projects going on. It was just, you know, the monkey bars and, and the seesaws and, and, you know, that's about it. We had this state-of-the-art equipment going on and all this investment going on. And, you know, to, to give, to put this all under one umbrella, I, I don't think it does us justice. I really don't.
I don't either.
Any other comments?
I have a, I have a procedural question based on this discussion because I don't, I don't think we want to kill this.
No, we, no, we need, we need to figure out a way to get ideas.
So do we table this to just, to budget? Do we table this till we have a work session and, and hash all this out?
Jim, can we do that? Can we table it?
Technically, if you table, it comes up again on the next meeting.
Oh.
But, you know, if, if it's not passed on first reading, it can be brought back at any subsequent time, either as is or as amended. So I don't think I would really table.
Best way to handle it, then. Okay.
All right. Any other further discussion on the matter? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any additional new business? Anybody?
No, sir.
Um, in terms of the executive session, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and individual personnel matters, plural. Uh, we do not need the executive session on the exempt Homeland Security matters.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be going into executive session. We'll be going into executive session.
...session at 2:48 PM. Only, uh... Individual personal matters and pending litigation was discussed. No action was taken. Do we have any motion on the floor?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to increase the pay for employee number zero three nine... zero nine two two, um, to $25.932 cents.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other matters? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned, folks.